Good. The Board of Alderman Work Session is now called to order. First item on the agenda is backfill.
First, Happy Public Works Week.
Happy Public Works Week. Got hot dogs and buns for you. We're good.
So, some of you may recall, back in May of 2020, the city adopted the 2017 Kansas City Metro, American Public Works Association Standards for Construction. And we recommended some modifications. We recommended some changes to the asphalt and concrete specs, mixed designs, pavement subgrade treatment, which we've been doing. And we recommended using Flowable Fill for excavations in streets. Flowable Fill is basically a low-strength concrete. Typically, it's a sand and cement mixture. It's diggable, and it doesn't settle. So that's why we recommended it. But while Flowable Fill is a great backfill material, it does have its drawbacks with expense. And at a previous commission meeting, a couple, or board meeting, a couple weeks ago, we had a local developer come in and ask that we review our Flowable Fill or our backfill standards. So I went ahead and I got ahold of a couple of our developers, some contractors, and some local engineers, and we all sat down to talk about this. And, you know, Flowable Fill is basically, you can't make a mistake. You dump it in the hole, set up, it's done. You can get compaction if you do it appropriately. A lot of times, just through experience, contractors are in a hurry. They push the dirt in, they drive over it, it doesn't settle. It doesn't get the compaction. So what we came up with was what you'll see in Exhibit 1. And it's basically a list of different scenarios, different trench widths, different depths of trenches. So, one of the first objectives that we pointed out to the developers and the engineers was we need to consider, and we need to take a hard look at where we put all of our utilities. We, right now, we typically put them all in the front. And then everybody has to cross water and sewer, and everybody's crossing the street. And we have all these extra, if we would put the sewer in the back, everybody could tie in the back, and we don't have half the crossings that we typically have. So that's the first thing that we've asked the engineers to look for. And we will start looking when they submit their plans, and suggesting if they've had them in the front, to move it to the back. It's not always going to work. Sometimes you have to, you know, you have to cross the street to get continuity of services sometimes. So you are going to have excavations. So what we came to a consensus on with the building community and city staff was that when we have narrow trenches, you really can't get any equipment in there compacted. So we're still going to use Flowable Fill. When you have what we'll call medium-sized trenches, which is four foot, less than four foot in depth, we're going to use an AB3, which is a base rock material, which we will even allow as a substitute for a cement treated subgrade. If you want to use six-inch of the AB3, compact that down. It gets hard, and it can get compacted properly. And then on your larger, deeper trenches, which typically that's going to be your large or your deeper sanitary sewers, which is gravity, and then your larger storm sewers, which just by default, storm sewer starts at 18 and on up. And to get that in, your trenches are extremely, extremely wide. So we're going to let the contractors go ahead. Got to get the drink.
Curbside 2.0.
So we're going to work with the contractors to make sure that that material gets compacted appropriately. We're going to do it in six-to-eight inch lifts. We're going to have them compacted to 95% compaction. They will have a testing firm onboard. It's going to take more time. It's going to take more effort. And we're going to verify the compaction with the testing firm. If those, if that's not met, they won't be able to put the pavement on top of the subgrade. So that's what we've come up with. I can answer questions. But we've put together a resolution for the board for later tonight at your regular session to approve that or adopt those standards if appropriate.
Thanks, Chuck. I have no questions. I read through it. Makes sense to me. Anyone on the board?
I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chuck, a question for you. I apologize for being late. I had the wrong time. So anyway, the, what was the difference between, and perhaps I missed it, what was the difference between the, what you approved, the compromise versus the standard that we had discussed earlier?
The American Public Works Association, Kansas City Metro Chapter have adopted standards. Their standards are pretty broad and generic. They cover, you know, they cover everything from small cities of 1,000 who can't, who don't have the staff to really understand and to know what specifications are, to a Kansas City Metro, who, you know, develop their own standards. And I went ahead and I, and I've got all the information. If the board would like to see it as well. I contacted several communities. Everybody has a little bit different take on everything. But essentially, what, what I proposed, coming from where I came from, was let's just do Flowable Fill. We don't have to worry about it. It's kind of a, you can't go wrong. You dump it in the hole, sets up, done, you go on. You can compact appropriately. But a lot of times, contractors are in a hurry. They dump the dirt in, they drive over it, call it good. It's hard on the top, but it's not compacted. What we've agreed to was putting it in in six-to-eight inch lifts, compacting it to 95% compaction of what it would have been if it was virgin soil. And they've got to do testing on the soil just to come up with that 95% compaction. And they've got new humidity testers that they can take out, and it will tell you how much it's been compacted. And then if they get 95%, then they can start coming up. So if they've got a four- or five-foot trench, they're going to have several lifts to bring up that will get tested every lift, and we will verify those reports. So that's, that's what we agreed to. That, it can be done, and it's done a lot, a lot. But when I, when I came here, I thought this is the easiest thing to do is just make it all Flowable Fill. But as I explained, Flowable Fill is, is really great in small trenches where you can't get things in, but it gets really expensive when you get larger trenches, because it costs as much as concrete. So that's, that's what we're recommending.
So the price difference, do you know what, what the price difference would be between, as far as?
The Flowable Fill is an actual cost. The compacting material is going to be time. So it's, it's the contractor's time and effort. They do have to hire a testing firm, so that guy's going to have to be out there the whole time they're laying in these lifts. So there will be a cost to that. But it's probably not near what the cost of Flowable Fill is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chuck. Next item on the agenda is number three. First bullet, FY 2022, six-month budget review.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I can, a little bit of introduction to all of the budget items this evening. This marks the first board review or action in relation to development of the 23, 2023 budget. So the update, six-month review of where we are in the 2022 budget really starts setting the tone for where we think we'll be moving into those deliberations for 2023. Then the department needs really provides an overview of the work that has been achieved over the last several months of staff working internally in departments with Stephen and myself, and looking at what those priorities are. And we provide that information to you all. And then the CIP updates reflect changes in costs and, and staff identified priorities based on information that we've received throughout the year and discussions with the board on an ongoing basis. So then the information presented this evening serves as the basis for the information that we will be reviewing and priorities we will be looking for from the board at next week's retreat, which internally as staff, we're calling a financial summit, because we have a lot of information we'll be providing for you all, and we will be looking for a lot of, of feedback and thought, basically taking the work of the last several years in strategic planning, comprehensive plan update, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, all of the studies and work that has gone into the organization over the last four years, now looking at prioritization and figuring out how, how we look at funding those. So staff has spent a good amount of time putting the information together tonight, and a significant amount of time is going into work for the retreat. As I'll note in the regular session also, we will post the agenda, the agenda only, for that, for the retreat tomorrow. The packet of information will be distributed probably late Friday afternoon so that you all have it over the weekend in preparation for Wednesday's retreat. At that, Stephen, I'll turn it over to you.
Cynthia, one point of clarification. Is it next Wednesday or the 20? I guess it would be next.
Wednesday is the 25th.
It is the 25th.
Yeah, it is the 25th.
Where did May go?
Thank you. That's what I want to know.
Welcome to May.
It's gone.
About gone.
It's almost over. How was Texas?
Thank you. You just described how I have felt the last.
Not having you drive me to Jeff City tomorrow. Is the remote going to work this time?
I've got the mouse.
Oh, okay. There we go.
I think it's going to work just fine. All right. It's a pleasure to come to you tonight to present our six-month budget update for our fiscal 2022 budget. The data that you'll see tonight is through April 30th and is reflective of the first half of the budget year. A few comments before we jump into the funds. The board has already approved a number of budget amendments this year. Budget amendments one, two, and three have been approved as a measure to increase project costs that have gone up for various CIP projects. We brought up the cleaning of a reinforced concrete box to the board earlier this year. We increased our project budgets for aerobic digester, our street scape phase three engineering, and we did our class and compensation implementation. We also segregated a CID fund away from our special allocation fund. So the budget figures you see are reflective of all those amendments. The payrolls, we've made it 50% of the way through the year, and we've paid out 13 of 26 payrolls this year. Take a look at the general fund, and we'll start with our revenues. This year, fiscal year 2022, we budgeted 4.9 in general fund revenues, and we're projecting to bring in about $150,000 higher than that at this point. We've received about 63% of our budget. Typically, we're above the 50% mark at 63, since we get a large property tax dispersment in January of the year. Some of the items you'll see here in a couple of slides, we have property tax, use tax, and building permits that are our big drivers in having that higher projection than budget at this time. On the expense side, we've budgeted 5.9 in expense, and we're projecting close to 5.7. We have a little bit of savings in our vacancies that we've had open this year. You can see below, we've already completed a number of our CIP projects, our master plans, and we're in progress on GIS management, and also have completed our street scape project. So we've made great progress on capital improvement projects this year in the general fund. Roller's pretty sensitive. Tricky. Property tax revenue, we budgeted 9.35 for this year, and we're projecting to bring in about 9.96. We're at 9.79 year-to-date. Like I mentioned, we see our biggest property dispersment in January. This year, in tax year 2022, we've really seen these revenues bolstered by new construction in the city with a number of new houses and commercial businesses. These property taxes have performed very well in 2022. Looking at our three-year trend for property tax, you can see we've seen consistent growth from the two previous years, and then our year-to-date number. We've seen about $60,000 year-over-year growth. And so we're going to continue that trend as we see our assessed valuations increase in the city. Looking at sales tax revenues, this is one of our largest revenues in the general fund, comprising nearly 40% with use tax. At this point in the year, we've received 48%, about 47.5% of our budget at 5.86. On average, we get about 44% of the sales tax we eventually receive in our fiscal year. So to see that higher than that amount is a great sign that we're going to make our budget for sales tax. This data does reflect all the transfer of TIF eats that we need to make for our marketplace businesses from the general fund into the special allocation fund. And here's our three-year trend history on sales tax. Again, we've seen consistent growth year-over-year, with fiscal year 2022 through six months being higher than our previous two years. So that's a great indicator that our local economy is doing well here in Smithville. Move on to our next major revenue category, use tax. Use tax is performing exceptionally well right now. So really give a gold star to use tax. And we budgeted 5.63. Right now, we're a little conservative on our projections at 5.72, because it can be so volatile. We've already received nearly $360,000 this year. So use tax has really exploded. I think purchasing trends have really started to change in the last few years with online purchasing growth really taking on a lot of what people are doing in terms of purchasing goods and services every day. So this category continues to grow. We're going to monitor it and see how it'll affect our revenue budget for 2023 and what figure we go with for our projections. To build off that, we look at our three-year use tax trend. You can see from 2020 to 2022, those receipts through six months have more than doubled. So it has really exploded in the last few years. And again, it continues to grow as a portion of our overall general fund revenue. The bottom line on general fund revenue looks like this. We came into this year, we budgeted about 3.4 in fund balance. When we started this year, we started with 3.7. We budgeted to use nearly a million in fund balance, but with our performance on revenues and expense, we're projecting to use about 600,000. So we'll have some savings over budget. So the general fund's performing well and continuing to monitor it to make sure we, we finish well where we think we will. Looking at capital permit sales tax, we budgeted 6.27 this year. We're projecting to bring in about 6.55. This fund, we have finished up the new downtown street scape project at Heritage Park. We helped pay for some of the basketball court with the funds out of this. We're going to be getting our engineering on Bridge Street, the street scape phase three. We've made our transfer to debt service out of this fund so that we can pay off our geo debt. We also have a little bit of money to transfer into the capital projects fund to help finish off street scape phase two. So this fund's performing well. Then on the three-year trend history, again, the sales tax performing well as we have beat fiscal year 20 and 21 through six months. On the debt service fund, it's really an internal service fund, transfer in of capital improvement sales tax to pay for our Series 2018 and 2019 geo debt that we issued for street improvements a few years ago. So we have one more interest payment to make it September, and the activity in that fund will be over for the year. Apologize, that, that's a sensitive mouse. Transportation sales tax fund, on the left, we have the new, newly-milled and overlaid roads of Hospital Drive and Tillman Road. So they look great. They're just a few weeks old now with the new mill and overlay. On the revenue side for this fund, we're looking good at 5.72 on our projection of the budget of 5.69. We've completed that annual overlay program. This fund also contributed some funds for phase two on the street scape. And then we have a number of other commodities we pay for through the rest of the year. We're projecting to finish just a little bit under budget on transportation sales tax, moving the Fourth Street Terrace Road repairs to the next fiscal year. So anticipate having a little bit of savings there in the fund. The three-year trend history follows other half-sent sales tax funds with consistent growth, six months of 22 beating the previous fiscal years. On the combined water and wastewater fund, we've budgeted 5.9 on revenues. We're projecting to bring in about 6.1. One of the big revenue highlights is we received 806,000 from Clay County as a part of their ARPA dispersments to help pay for the raw water pump station. So we'll have some bolstered revenues there. On our capital improvement projects, we're making great progress on a number of projects that are listed in the bullets. A lot of those projects we're continuing to spend on. I'm sorry. My, is there another? I'm telling you, it's like... The clicker doesn't work. Oh. Oh, I see. Thank you. Okay, I will use those from now on. So like I said, capital permit projects in progress, and as we continue to spend on those, those expenses will grow. At this point, we've just spent about a third of that budget. On the revenue side, we're seeing that these revenue targets for water sales and wastewater sales are making the budget. Both the percentages are above the three-year trend histories. So that's excellent news at this point. Really, what we'll track here in the summer months is the consumption and the water sales being the largest revenue line item there. If we watch that closely in the summer months, because that's where the greatest usage is. But so far, it's tracking really well compared to the budget. And then the three-year history of quarter two, you can see we've seen increases in revenue year-over-year through six months. Rate adjustments that the city has made allowed us to receive more revenues and make further improvements to our utility system. So it's money well spent. It's been invested into our utility systems that we have improved infrastructure. Quickly, I'll touch on the sanitation fund, really a pass-through account. On the customer charges, we're still projecting to be on budget at about 8.49. We've received 4.09 in revenue so far. And then on the expense side, we've expended 4.12. We've made our payment to Mark for the household hazardous waste program, and we've had that event take place. On the trend history, it's very typical for expenses to just exceed revenues ever so slightly by a couple thousand dollars. You can see revenues have decreased a little bit, and that corresponds with our lower customer charges that the board had passed in the previous budget cycle. We negotiated that contract, brought down costs, and also brought a discount to our customers. The park and stormwater sales tax. Matt and the Parks and Rec staff have coordinated the Diamond Crest Neighborhood Park and Playground, and they've helped finish with the construction. That playground is now open. It looks great. We've spent 3.0, excuse me, we've received 3.01 in revenue, projecting to bring in about 6.55 on a budget of 6.27. On the expense side, we also have budgeted 1.50 for a stormwater master plan beginning shortly as we begin to close out the year. Our Diamond Crest Neighborhood Park, which is almost completed, and then engineering for Quincy and Owens. On the VERF, the city uses Enterprise Fleet Management to lease vehicles. On the revenue side, we see we're receiving 2.10 year-to-date. That's comprised of a number of vehicles that the city has sold to Enterprise. We've sold 14 vehicles with Enterprise since 2011. And then it's also comprised of the $135,000 transfer that we've made into the VERF from the general fund for, for new police vehicles. You can see the projections a little bit higher than the budget. We went ahead and budgeted that as, as an expense in the police department, and the actual transfer gave this fund a little bit more revenue than what was budgeted. On the expenditure side, I'm tracking this pretty closely. We want to make sure that those expenses and increased lease costs that we've had as vehicle prices have increased continue to meet that budget. So we'll watch that and bring any, any amendments that may be needed to the board. But I know staff are, are really enjoying these vehicles. They're more efficient. We're seeing less maintenance costs. They've been a tremendous addition to the fleet. Our last fund here, the ARPA fund. Year-to-date activity, we have received some monies. There's been $10,495 deposited in this fund. It was a result of funds that were either declined or not requested by another non-entitlement unit within the state. So we have seen some additional revenue from ARPA. We should see another payment similar to the first one, maybe about 1.1 million there, coming in around September of 2022. On the expense side, as we close in on the completion of the raw water pump station and continue to spend on that, those expenses will go into that fund. Soon as we spend our 806 from Clay County, we'll place expenditures in that fund. I anticipate on the next budget update, we'll, I'll have some numbers to plug in there for you so it can report how we're doing. With that, I'll give you a conclusion. Revenues, property taxes perform well. We're continuing to be bolstered by new construction. Our sales tax is performing well through six months. We're outperforming quarter-two year-to-date figures from the previous two years. Our use tax, like I said, this is doing exceptionally well. We just remain conservative on the projections due to the volatile nature of this tax. And then the ARPA, we have seen that reduce the need for using combined water and wastewater monies. On the expenditure side, the general fund operational expenditures continue to rise with inflation, but they track towards budget. And then we're monitoring the vehicle leasing expense compared to budget. Make sure we don't see those costs increase over the budget and budget amendment if needed. So. Any questions on the update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, on the, you touched on the use tax, so there's that. And you also touched on some of the student online shopping. And, and the, the optimism on, on the budget due to the volatile nature, is that going to be passed on to 2023 budget as well? You mentioned the volatile nature. Is that going to be passed on as far as unknown? Are you going to go with the percentage off of this year increase? Or how are you going to figure that out? Do we just wait and see the end, or?
Yeah, I think it's a conversation that Cynthia and I will have to have. We really want to try to get through the next four to six months and see if it's continuing to stay strong. I mean, right now with all the inflation, I think consumers' pocketbooks are being pushed. And, you know, with a potential recession coming in the next year, we've heard a little bit of that in the news. We just want to watch that category and make sure we're not starting to see some declines. One thing we can do is we can continue to monitor how each month performs compared to last year and take into consideration how the economy is doing and how, how the consumer is doing. And using that information, I think we'll be able to make a, a good conservative number that we know that we can hit, but it's also mixed with probably a little bit aggressiveness so that we have a, a good revenue budget.
And Stephen, I'll jump in here a little bit too. Alderman Russell, we do plan on presenting at the retreat projections for all of our revenue sources for the 2023 budget. So tonight is providing an update where we are year-to-date. We use that to, to roll into those projections. And in the information we'll present there, we'll also outline, given this information and those trends, we'll get in a little bit more in-depth on those. But those projections are initial right now with just six months of this year. And so we continue to look at that. We'll have final projections that we roll into the revenue, or excuse me, into the budget recommendations later this summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, Mayor, I just, it's exciting to see that our property tax revenue is approaching a million.
No, Mayor, I just, it's exciting to see that our property tax revenue is approaching a million. Please will be over that next year. So.
Moving on.
Shouldn't it be Chuck since he's the one asking for the most money? Okay. I have my wallet. Sorry, Chuck. It's not payday. You take Apple Pay? Venmo?
PayPal?
Bitcoin. Of course you do. Keep waiting for you to dig up some Bitcoins and you're tearing up all these pipes. Or golden coins, whatever. She's keyboarding those. Technology.
So we'll go through fund by fund here. Or is it general funds? You know, completely forgot. Well, departments will present their budgets. And the format that we'll use will include kind of a highlight of twenty twenty one, twenty two accomplishments. And then those items that staff see as issues or items for discussion and and highlight for development of the twenty twenty three budget. We'll highlight those areas that are included in the staff recommended budget. And then also some things that are items for consideration. Couple of things that we've asked you to think about as we go through this, there may be some. Items that are priorities to you or you'd like to see considered as part of the twenty twenty three budget. If you can bring those up this evening or make sure and have those to bring, that will be the beginning of the retreat next week. In thinking through the those things to ensure that we have all the items in the list that we're we're looking at for. Inclusion in the twenty twenty three budget. So we'll go department by department, beginning with the general fund. First in administration, our areas this year have really focused on employee involvement, employee compensation. And employee acknowledgement. We have implemented a wellness committee. We worked through the compensation and classification study with the consultants, provided that to the board and the board. Were incredibly supportive and and staff is grateful for the responsiveness of the board to the recommendations of the company classification study. We also. Coordinated a process to onboard a new health insurance broker, and that helped us in evaluating and looking at the health insurance plans that we provide to employees. We've continued on an economic development perspective. Our partnership with the Main Street, Smithville Main Street District. And we have completed an MOU and continue through that funding and coordination with them. Over the course of the last several months, the EDC has also. Reviewed our development incentive policy and will be providing information to the governing body this summer on recommendations to. Make changes to those incentive policies. We've also based on recommendation last year and inclusion in the budget of neighborhood beautification grants at the last meeting, you all approved twenty five thousand dollars or just under twenty five thousand dollars worth of expenditures. For neighborhood beautification grants, staff work to to coordinate and implement that. In the area of increased communications with the public, we worked to increase, expand. Thank you. Oh, look at that. We have expanded the content of the citizen newsletter and have increased the frequency of those presentation, the distribution of of the newsletters. When we look to twenty twenty two. Excuse me, twenty twenty three, we continue our partnership with the Main Street District and include about twenty thousand dollars for that contract. The total over four years for that contract is seventy five thousand dollars worth of funding to the Main Street District. We've included an additional twenty five thousand dollars for neighborhood beautification grants for next year. We've also included funding to provide for a citizens academy. In looking around what other communities do, there are a number of communities in our area that. On a periodic basis, either throughout the year or maybe one time a year, we'll put together an opportunity for. Residents to come and learn about local government. Basically, those of you who have more recently been elected, we've done orientation sessions for the governing body members. That's kind of what we we would look at that tours of facilities. And kind of a local government one oh one. We had hoped to be able to implement that. We haven't really gotten into any detail on timing of that. We'd like to get at least one class of probably ten to fifteen people through. In next year, if if not more, in order to be able to provide education and information to our residents on on what we do as a community. Included in the weekly report this week, we indicated that we had submitted a request for a grant through Clay County for. Economic development and tourism for a grant using their ARPA funds. If we are successful in that, we would need a ten thousand dollar match for that project that would hire a firm to help us with consistent signage and wayfinding. We really look to continue our work in employee relations, continuation of work by the wellness committee included in the the weekly this week was also. The very first wellness newsletter. So we'll continue working through that and anticipate a number of challenges for employees throughout the year to keep them involved in that way. A citywide focus on training. Through the last couple of years, we've not had opportunities to do a lot of continuing education or training or professional development, just because. COVID shut things down and we weren't able to attend training. We're really focusing on getting back to that level of participation in professional organizations. And employee training and focusing on succession planning for employees and ensuring that they have the skills to move forward in the organization. And then we will have discussions on our compensation and merit pool based on the recommendations of the compensation and classification study. Then we do have about nineteen thousand dollars included in the budget for replacement of two servers that. Support the computer systems here at City Hall. One of the items that we will discuss in the retreat are. Items like this of those ongoing long term needs that we sometimes fall behind on. I will turn it over to Stephen for finance.
We are a small but mighty department of four that helps the city run in a lot of different ways. And so. Want to point out Myra Orey, our finance analyst, joining us for tonight's meeting. The twenty twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, we did a lot of accomplished a lot of great things, received the GFOA distinguished budget award. For our budget document, I received notice this week that we also received the FY twenty two award. And we made some significant improvements in a lot of areas. We also developed a PAFR, a popular annual financial report. It shows you a lot of different. Key indicators about city performance, financial activity and what we've accomplished. It puts it in a nice, tidy and easy to consume format. So. If you haven't looked at that document, be sure to check that out. It it showcases the entire city really well and just under ten pages. Last year for the board, we brought CIP project pages to our five year CIP. It gives you the opportunity to look at each project and see. Our justification for why we're doing the project and and what it does organizationally for our city. Our finance specialists and and with help from Myra, we bill and service over forty one hundred utility customer accounts on a monthly basis, and they. Handle all the calls at the front desk and answer questions for many, many of those accounts. We also engaged Raffatella's consultants this year to complete a utility rate study, and they're continuing to complete that study as we speak, and I. Anticipate by our board retreat next week, we'll be able to share some preliminary results. Our office coordinated all the cares and ARPA fund administration auditing and reporting. We also worked with Clifton Larson Allen to complete a special cares audit on those expenses. And then in twenty twenty one, we also negotiated new contracts with AT&amp;T and Avid for internet and telephone service. We lowered our contract costs while still retaining service that's reliable and and works for our operations. Moving on to the discussion points. For finance, in twenty twenty three, for consideration. We had looked to implement the migration of our financial management suite from N code nine version to N code ten. It's a forty four thousand dollar expense that we have in our fiscal year twenty twenty three proposed budget. That movement from N code nine and code ten is going to give us a number of upgrades in our functionality, our data accessibility and our reporting capabilities. And Anna and I have had a number of demos with N code. It's really a spectacular product that can give us a lot of advantages in our suite. We're also going to work with Hyper Sandler on issuing a certificate of participation. Or combined water and wastewater capital improvement projects. Those projects are up for your consideration and adoption in this year's budget process. We're going to have consideration of the utility rate recommendations from the study that's produced by Raffatella's. And so we'll present those in our scheduled fees discussion on June twenty first. Coming up in June as well, for your consideration, we'll win evaluation of our utility disconnection policy. So we'll look at our current policy and review. Some of the recommendations from staff and some of our finance committee members. Finally, with a number of large capital projects that are up for your consideration, we'll evaluate debt capacity and debt issuance ability during our budget process. And we're going to bring you a curriculum on a lot of that in our board retreat next week. So with that, I will pass it off to chief.
Thank you, everybody. Let's see, we're talking about twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. On the left there, you've kind of got our department structure on on how our departments laid out. On the right there, on the right, you've got kind of key accomplishments for this year and what we have accomplished and what we're working on. Not only did we hire and sponsor our first first academy recruit through the police academy, we're working on actually number seven right now. So. That's that's a big accomplishment for for a small department our size in a small town. We could, we've completed replacement training and implementation of a new records management system. That's basically the computer system that runs the entire department. That transition was completed in October, and I'm happy to say is running very smoothly right now. I'm actually better than expected. We completed a facility needs assessment and presented that final final product to the board here. We've completed our radio replacement project, replacing all our radios ahead of schedule to align with the. Mars radio system transition to an encoded system, which is scheduled to happen in July. We've purchased ten patrol rifles and the the peripherals needed for those. All the equipment is in house and being assembled, and we're waiting to coordinate training for the department, which we anticipate will probably be in late summer. We have gone through the process to purchase a computer voice stress analysis to bring much of the. Voice stress analysis for pre employment in house. You all saw that, I believe it was two meetings ago. We're just waiting training for operators, which is in June for that device. And then. We've ordered four patrol cars through enterprise. That is half of our patrol fleet and. We're on hold with that like everybody else in the the supply chain. So we look forward to twenty twenty three. We're going to continue to aggressively recruit and hire to fill vacancies and. Keep our streets safe and keep those numbers up. We're fortunate right now. We only have one opening right now, and we continue to see applicants. We are at about. I found out recently. We're we're seeing applicants per month at about a rate of about fifty percent of what Kansas City Police Department see. So we're actually. For department our size, we're doing very well there. We're going to look to replace an additional four patrol cars next year that will get the entire patrol fleet replaced and in that program with enterprise that we've had a lot of success with. We'll continue our annual Taser replacement, and that is like Cynthia said, that's one of those. One of those programs that is just a continual replacement of. Equipment to keep us up to date. We'll need to replace six workstations, replace several computers last year. Twelve to eighteen months. Through COVID with a lot of laptops to be able to work remotely and. Mobily. But we have several stations that still need an actual workstation, an actual tower, like in the squad room in our evidence room. Where they're just, they're not going to be mobile. They're always going to be workstations there at those locations. We we want to look at replacing four of our mobile data terminals. Those are the computers inside the cars that the officers use to operate. Day to day, that's about half of the fleet. We're looking to try to get those on a on a schedule where not all of them are aging out at the same time. So that we don't take a large hit on replacement there. And then we're looking to increase training for both newly promoted officers and succession planning there as well.
Good evening. No, it's just the clicker.
Sorry, Jack.
There we go. Technology, not my key strength, obviously. Where the. The development department has five employees, as you can see on this on the screen. Two building and code inspectors, one code enforcement inspector and one permit tech, and then, of course, myself. This last year, our biggest accomplishments were actually getting the twenty eighteen. Building codes up online and. In use, we are, we've. February, we made those across the board where everything applied. We staggered it in because it takes a while for builders to get up to speed on the new changes. We also have both of our building inspectors certified and residential inspections. First time that's ever happened here, that we've had every inspector certified. They are working on continuing that process. We also spent a lot of time getting, as you may recall from a couple of weeks ago or last week. The implementations of actions in the comprehensive plan. We've made a lot of progress on that. We're continuing to work on that aspect of it. From a capital standpoint, we expended funds related to upgrading our in code system to get a code enforcement module. And as you can see. In the coming months, you'll be able to see a lot more data as it relates to those inspections, how they're going on. What types of issues we're dealing with. Because this system will be able to give us more reports quicker. The budget summary is was covered by Stephen fairly well. Here we are. Nothing really to comment there. For the coming year. We have some. Funding, rely reliant. Action items under the comprehensive plan. One is. To establish a zoning overlay for the west side of one sixty nine, south of Barton Heights to one hundred and thirty sixth street. We have estimated at this time a consultant cost to do all of that work would be between twenty and twenty five. It's not budgeted for next year. This really needs the board to set priorities as to when, if and how all that stuff comes into the into the game. We also have. A another item in the comprehensive plan for establishing the gateways into town, the south entrance on one sixty nine. The east entrance on ninety two, the north entrance, et cetera. So there those entrances with gateways. Is part of the comprehensive plan. We estimate between seven and fifteen thousand for that, depending on the scope of the the project. um, is part of the comprehensive plan. We estimate between seven and 15,000 for that, depending on the scope of the, the project. And again, not currently budgeted. And then, even though we just, uh, added in-code software this year, um, we are also hoping to include a upgrade to the in-code software for the, uh, in-code 10, as others have mentioned. For us, it gives us the ability to have a mobile app that will, um, eliminate the VPN process. It's much quicker for the inspectors. Um, and it's live fire. As soon as they make a hit, the other one, uh, make an inspection, the other one will see it on his screen or her screen, depending on how that works. Um, so we're, uh, that's in the proposed budget. Um, and then we are also, uh, looking at the consideration of a part-time code enforcement officer. These are all items that we'll be discussing later uh, in the board retreat. The code enforcement officer, um, every day, we're continuing to get more and more things going on. You all have obviously heard pros and cons, uh, related to the enforcement of our codes. Um, that's a process isn't gonna stop. And now that we're in the full-on mowing season, it's going to continue. So if you have any questions, I'll.
Gets out of the way quick. Even for Matt.
Hey, everybody. Um, so as you can see, our department structure, Parks and Recreation. Uh, we have five full-time staff. There's a director, recreation, marketing manager, the parks maintenance crew leader, and then two park maintenance one. And the key accomplishments, uh, in July of, uh, 2021, you all, um, helped pass the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That was an eight-month process, uh, to set a 10-year plan for, uh, recreation staffing in parks. In July of 2001, uh, we were able to open this splash pad that is up at Diamond Crest Park. Uh, it was open to the public. Uh, we purchased shade structures, benches and fencing's prior to that opening. Uh, Smiths Fork Campground in November of 21, 31 additional camp sites have been upgraded to 50 amp. Uh, services was done through CARES funding. Now every site has 50 amp service capability. We also were able to change up, um, to online, uh, reservations, uh, from the upgrades of sites to convert your reservations online and a $5 increase in price. The campground revenue had a 40% increase in revenue and a 9% increase in occupancy rate 2020. One. Uh, for the senior center, uh, we were able to get the senior back, senior center back open and expand, uh, rental availability. Uh, that has been, um, something that was a focus in 2021 into 2022. And, uh, we're, and we were also able to secure, um, a senior fitness grant through Clay County Senior Services. Shout out for Brittany for, for getting that for year to year. And she's got some great, um, instructors inside the senior center that are keeping the classes full, which is awesome. So the senior centers want more or the seniors themselves want more. Uh, for recreation, uh, COVID-19 did not slow recreation programming down in 2021. Uh, it was another notable year for youth programs as numbers were able to, were up and showed no, no sign of slowing down. Um, adult programming, um, through the different surveys we've done throughout the past, um, you know, years with master planning, um, adult programming has shown, um, commuters want to see more. Um, and so in 2021, we added adult kickball, which, um, many of you were participants in that, which is, which was awesome. That was very fun. Um, but we also added, um, some more new offerings and new programs such as esports, kickball, fitness classes, stuff and flip, candy cane hunts, uh, learn to kayak and pickleball. One thing that, um, our part maintenance crew staff in our department, um, was really happy to see this year was in 2021. Um, there were zero reports related to cleanliness of the restrooms in parks. Um, that's a high standard that, um, they keep there. Um, vandalism is occurring in restroom and parks and we're always trying to figure out the best way to monitor that. So. And then I also wanted to kind of throw in the notable, notable accomplishments here. So Heritage Park Basketball Court and the new Heritage Park Playground Parking Lot was also completed in 21 as part of the streetscape. Um, some discussion points, uh, we're looking at, um, from 2023, um, is still to prioritize the Parks and Rec Master Plan within the Parks and Storm Real Sales Tax Fund. Uh, we've worked as a staff to continue to, um, look into the future to make sure that we're, um, could complete the master plan within the 10 years or as soon as possible. As well as in the financial summit, you guys will see, um, we're looking at some of staffing in the Parks and Rec Department. Uh, we're looking for a full-time, um, recreation coordinator position. Um, as you saw, programming's growing, we want to make sure we can continue to deliver, um, high community, high communication to community members, quality of programs, um, as well as we also want to expand. We don't want to slow down youth and adult programming, um, could definitely be expanded, but, um, not with current situation we have. We believe we're pretty, pretty maxed out with, um, what we're able to do. But we're still gonna continue to offer and get as many kids in programs as possible. Here in the coming, uh, weeks, in the next month, uh, we're gonna look at the senior center contract renewal. Uh, we just wanna, their contract ends coming into 2023. So we want to look at what that possibility looks like for, um, opening that up for more availability. Um, as well as you see down in, in two bullets, uh, we're looking to paint the senior center to help with, um, getting that a better aesthetic and to get more people in there. Uh, we've had monthly meetings on the legacy funds, uh, but we will still continue those conversations on what the expectations are for them, uh, such as fundraising and, uh, different opportunities. And then as in the, um, fiscal year 23 proposed budgets, um, you'll see that we put in two zero turn mowers, zero turn mowers and one bat wing style mower. Um, as the mowers, uh, we have one for 2010 and as they get over 2,000 hours and they start to lose value and, uh, you know, the mowers only get more expensive. So if we can keep, um, a good transition into inventory, which we're working with staff, to continue to keep those costs down and, and, uh, continue to get new equipment. And that way, maintenance is, is decreased. So, thank you.
All right, which one are we doing here? All right. Good evening. So I'm gonna talk about Public Works Utilities, all the sales tax, um, funds and everything else, I guess, to the end. Um, our department structure for the street department. Um, currently we are two. I mean, we are two positions down in the street department. Um, so right now we're working with a staff of three. Um, so we're limited in what we can do, but we do maintain approximately 50 mi- miles of road. Uh, the street department does the street repair, the potholes, curb and gutter, crack seal, street sweeping, snow removal, the air first responders, storm sewer, maintenance, ditches, sidewalk programs, street signs, and that downtown lighting, which we picked one up this weekend, I guess. Um, some of the things that we've accomplished through the, uh, general fund department of public works. Um, we completed the transportation master plan, which is on your agenda for later this evening to adopt. Um, we did enter into an agreement with Sam surveying and mapping. I think a lot of people have seen him out and around in their neighborhoods. We had a meeting, uh, just this afternoon with them. Um, they've gotten all of our water valves, our water lines or manholes, our storm sewer inlets, our sewer lines are all on the map. Um, in the neighborhoods, we need to do some cleanup work and stuff. So we're looking the next couple of months to be a lot further down the road. And we do anticipate putting our pavement condition rating on there, um, street center lines, um, all kinds of information that hopefully by the end of the year will be, have a really nice map, uh, for the public to look at. And we did complete a space needs analysis for Parks and Rec and Public Works facilities. Um, we replaced 720 feet of sidewalk through our sidewalk program. And we responded to 10 snow events. We did award a new snow contract. I think our contractor did very well this year. And we're looking to talk to him about expanding that, uh, his responsibilities next year. Um, and Stephen mentioned, we had the huge storm sewer, um, box on Woods, Wood Street that we had to clean out. So for our discussion points, um, we have completed our second round of rating our streets, our PCI's pavement condition index. Uh, we go out, we rate streets, um, we're reviewing that. We will come back to the board in the next couple of months to let you know what the results were for this next round. And we'll be able to compare to the first time we evaluated them a couple of years ago. And maybe it's gonna take more than two times to see trends, but we can at least tell you that we're moving in the right direction, we hope. Um, we are gonna bring to the board probably during the schedule of fees, a recommendation on a street excavation fee. Essentially, we have contractors that dig in the road and the one that I keep driving over is because Eagle Heights is going on right now. Is the one right there on commercial that's been open for so long. Um, but when they dig in the road, it's never the same as when the road was originally constructed. Um, so we want to impose a street excavation fee, um, that will help with long-term maintenance of those areas and help provide the funds to make the repairs after they've dug into those streets. Um, contracted sidewalk repair program. Right now, our program consists of, somebody has a bad sidewalk or if codes basically has a complaint, we go out and we tell them about our program. Our program is made, it's pretty much a 50-50 program. If they pay for the materials, then we'll put it in, we'll install it, the city will install it. So it works out about 50-50. Um, the problem is we have one section in Forest Oaks, two sections in Harborview, one section in Cedar Lakes. And in order for us to be efficient, we need to have enough in one area to bring a concrete truck in, dump the concrete, finish it and move on. So we do have some people that are out there several months, um, waiting until we have enough accumulated. The proposed program will probably look something like where we will go out, similar to the PCI, look at an area, neighborhood, Forest Oaks or Hills of Shannon and say, here's all the sidewalks that need repaired in this area, notify property owners that we're gonna do this and you know, somehow we'll have to figure out how we get participation of 50% and do the whole area. That'll be, that's the only way we'll be able to get a contractor to come in because he's not gonna jump from, you know, south end of town to north end of town to do one or two sections. He's gonna want to do several, several areas concentrated so he can be efficient. So that's probably what we're gonna kind of propose. And we're gonna continue to evaluate, um, our snow removal contract, um, with our contractor. Um, it seems to be working. It really helps out. Um, it gives us a little bit breathing space, especially on those larger storms, which we can get our crews out and we can respond a little quicker. Uh, utilities department. We are down one in the utilities department as well. Um, we have been trying to get somebody onboard in utilities for about six months. Um, maybe a little longer. Um, they're just, we just don't have the applicants or they don't show up or they really don't have any experience or know what they're really getting into. So we have not been able to fill that position, but here are utilities departments, basically water and sewer. They do all your water lines, your hydrant, your service lines. They do sewer collection, all your manholes, wastewater treatment, water production. They maintain 31 lift stations and four water towers. Um, in 21, 22, um, and I have samples, but I think you've all seen it of our slip line or our cured in place pipe. And we did about 3,800 linear feet of that. And we continued that. We just recently awarded the bid to sack construction, um, and we should be starting that another 1,800, I think, feet, um, to do. And that's really, you know, like I said before, that really strengthens the pipe. It reduces infiltration. Um, these are pipes that are hard to get to, um, that we've had problems on, that we've had backups, you know, we, we clean them, the tree roots are removed. And once we seal that pipe up with that cured in place product, you know, we don't have those intrusions anymore. We don't have the backups and it's a, gives us a lot longer life. And those are the types of lines that you don't want to have to dig up because a lot of them are in the street. And they're deep. Um, we completed Highland Drive sanitary sewer line. If you remember, that was Mrs. Armstrong. Um, she was having significant problems. We haven't had a proper one up there since then. So that's been really good. Um, staff completed the, uh, action plan, but we did have, um, H and T B complete our water infrastructure assessment. And then we completed the action plan in-house. We replaced several pumps and lift stations and maintained our, uh, pump stations and uh, we did weekly maintenance on them. We conducted over 4,000 utility locates. Um, that's, so we have one guy doing utility locates. And last year, you'll remember we had United Fiber and AT&amp;T and they were just going gangbusters. They had eight crews in here. And we had one guy trying to locate all these utilities. He does water sewer and storm sewer. Um, he was run ragged last year, but we got it done. You know, they still hit a couple, but that was on them, not us. Uh, we did adopt the wastewater master plan. Uh, we produced, uh, nearly 369 million gallons of water. It's quite a bit of water. Um, and we did receive the, like Stephen mentioned, we received some ARPA funds from the county to help with the costs at the uh, raw water intake and the Smith Fork Lift Station. Discussion point. So we do have under contract right now to do the engineering for the 144th Street Lift Station and the West Bypass. We anticipate that to be, the plans to be complete, probably late summer. Uh, we'll have to get some easements and then we'll, uh, be ready to begin probably towards the first of the year, um, bidding and construction. Um, our cure, cured and pace, cured in place pipe program. And we have additional budget, um, proposed in the 23 budget. Uh, we would encourage that to be continued. Um, that saves a lot of time, a lot of headaches, especially when lines back up into people's homes. This is a good program to have. We want to explore an on-call, um, services agreement for the water and wastewater plants. Um, we don't have a lot of details on that yet. We'll probably bring some more back, um, on that, but, um, it was a great idea that, uh, Bob Lemley had. And we have a lot of pumps and a lot of equipment out there and we submit several bids, you know, high service pumps, transfer pumps, this pump, that pump. And it always seems to be the same group is giving us the best bids and they are doing great work and they're very responsive. So we're thinking maybe what we need to do is put out a on-call contract, just like, you know, we did with the engineers. And we would be able to call them and we would be able to, instead of you guys getting up, Chuck needs another emergency authorization for another pump. Anyway, um, and we are asking for the addition of a plant supervisor for our water plant for the second shift. Right now we have one person on second shift, a couple of days a week. And you know, there's chemicals out there, there's equipment out there, um, and they're, they're all alone. Nobody, the rest of the public works isn't there either because it's after 3:30. And if something were to happen, that person would be on their own. Um, it's a safety issue, but we can also get a lot more done. We can do some plant maintenance, which right now they can't do alone. Uh, we can do some, uh, inspections. We can do some operations that we just can't do with one person. One person just basically has to sit there and not get hurt and, you know, make sure everything's running right. And then if something comes up, they have to call people in, but, um, so we are requesting that. We already have a couple of contracts for engineering for Quincy Boulevard and Fourth Terrace. Uh, Winter Road's another one. And I've got the pipes in my office if anybody wants to see them, but where are those? I thought you had those on here. The next PowerPoint that show the corrosion and stuff of the pipes, um, you know, they're really bad. Um, you'll see these projects in, you know, in the capital improvement program and the street program and the water program because we're trying to do things holistically. We're not just going in, tearing up the road, putting in new water line, patching the road. We're gonna do the storm water. We're gonna do the road. We're gonna, and Quincy, we're doing sidewalks. Um, so we're trying to, when we go into the neighborhood and we disrupt them as much as we're going to, let's take care of it. Let's get everything fixed. And we want to begin planning for, um, the water plant reconstruction. It's out to 27, 28. We've pushed that out a little bit. Uh, we've figured out that probably we need to do the wastewater plant before we do the water plant, um, expansion. So we'll probably look towards engineering. So we'll probably look towards engineering for that next year. And then we need to get a bar screen at the front of the wastewater treatment process, not after it goes through the pumps. Because the pumps are getting plugged up with all the wipeys and rags and stuff that people dispose of. And we end up having the Polo's pumps and they're brand new pumps and they're big pumps. And it's expensive to get those things cleaned out. So we need to put a new bar screen in the front of the headworks so that we're not running the sewage through before it's getting treated. Transportation sales tax. And it's a half cent sales tax that the community voted on and went into effect the first of July in eighty-nine. Let's jump on our screen. It generates about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. This year, or the purpose of the sales taxes to be used for construction, reconstruction, repairing the streets, sidewalks, trails, parking lots. And bridges within the city. We did win an award and we will receive that tomorrow at the APWA Kansas City Metro Chapter Project of the Year Award for Small Cities. For our downtown streetscape phase two. We continue to do our street sweeping program and we started that the first of April. It will continue through the end of October and depending on the weather, we'll continue it possibly to November. I'm trying to keep the leaves and stuff out of the storm sewers. Our twenty-twenty-one street maintenance program was expanded a little bit. And we spent over six hundred thousand dollars to do Cold Tradition and Rock Creek subdivisions. And our twenty-twenty-two street maintenance program is already completed and Tillman Road has been striped. So it should look really sharp now and Hospital Drive. And so those were done. And that is something that we'll have to discuss with the board as well. Last year, when we did the Cold Tradition in the Rock Creek subdivision, we came back to the board and said. Superior Bowen did a really great job. Would you like us to keep the contract open? This year Superior Bowen did a really great job and, you know, but it's. With, with all the unknowns of the economy and oil prices. I think we need to think about, do we want to keep the contract open for next year or do we want to bid it again next year? So we just need to, we'll have to have that discussion and make that decision because prices are just astronomical in the asphalt industry. So we'll have to have that. Discussion points. Okay, so we got the continuation of the annual sidewalk program as I mentioned. If we go to a contracted sidewalk program, that may change a little bit. You know, this was just basically for. Materials that we pay for and. Yeah, we'll have to discuss how much we want to do and that may make a difference on the size of the area that we would take a look at. Annual stripping program. We haven't got that out yet, but we will get that out, twenty-five thousand dollars. Again, this is paint, so it's going to have to be an annual type deal. And we typically don't put the more expensive material on streets that aren't new. Tillman got the expensive material because it's, you know, got a new overlay and it will adhere to it. And then we have the other project. So you'll notice in the twenty-twenty-three, our street maintenance program is only two hundred thousand. And we've typically been going three hundred and in future years, it'll be three hundred or more. But if you also notice, we're doing Four Street and we're doing Quincy and we're doing those roads as well. So, you know, when you look at that some total, we're probably doing more than three hundred thousand. Because we're also taking care of those two roads. So we thought that we'd scale back just the mill and overlay. The board wants to do more, just got to find the money. And then we've got several projects and this will be true for a couple of slides. Well, let's start with the commercial street sidewalk and we did get a Mark grant for that. On your agenda is the agreement with MoDOT for the tap funding this evening. It's a twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four project, but we'll start the engineering next year, probably get it bid. Well, we may start the engineering early, late this year. And then get it bid in late twenty-three. So, but that is a Mark project. Yeah, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we're getting from Mark, seven hundred fifty thousand dollar. Project, if you remember, goes from the high school all the way downtown, so all the way into downtown. Our capital improvement sales tax. Again, this was a half cent sales tax that was passed by the voters in twenty-eighteen. Generates about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Purpose of the sales taxes to fund and finance operating and maintaining capital improvements. And the first several projects were done prior to me, Emery Road, Second Creek, Hundred and Eightieth Street, Commercial Street Sidewalks. And then I helped complete the Main Street Trail and the Downtown Streetscape Projects. And we also completed the phase three, we are working on the phase three design. For Streetscape, which is on Bridge Street, across the bridge over to First Street. That should be bid probably the end of the year, so it'll be built in twenty-three. Discussion points. There is, bid Streetscape three in the spring of twenty-twenty-three. So other projects, Quincy Boulevard, I mentioned Quincy and Owen. So we've got several projects here, the Second Creek Sidewalk, the First Street and First and Bridge Street Roundabout. We've submitted preliminary applications to Mark for four different projects. The first and Bridge Street Roundabout, Second Creek Sidewalk, The River Walk. And I got one more here. No, Pope Lane Extension. So they've all been submitted, they're in the future CIP if we get funding from Mark. We, we submitted them preliminarily, Mark's reviewing them, they'll provide comments so we can make our applications better. We will bring that to the board because there is commitment. You know, once, if they award us the grant, we're coming up with, you know, the matching funds for it and they're not cheap. We got a lot of support for the Second Creek Sidewalk. And MoDOT supporting the Pope Lane Extension. So we do have support for those projects, but we'll have more discussions with the board on, you know, what, we didn't submit them all. We probably won't get them all, but we wanted to make sure that we had our names in the hat for the projects that the board may want to consider. I think I'm coming to the end. Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. So I'm just going to talk about the stormwater part and then Matt will talk about the rest of it. And I'm going to probably jump to the next slide as well. But basically this year, we got, we completed our NPD, PDES permit, our National Pollutant and Elimination Discharge Systems Permit. Which we submitted to the state and we had that, we discussed it with the board several months ago. And it had some steps that we have to do, we'll be bringing back to the board some education. But we did get a website up for stormwater for some education and we're doing some other things as well. We're monitoring construction projects and keeping track of that and doing that. And then the other thing that we're going to do with the stormwater funds from this is start the stormwater master plan. And which will identify projects and prioritize projects within the community that we can build to improve any flooding system situations. I wanted to wait until after we get the stormwater infrastructure in the GIS. So that will help the people that'll do the master plan know what we have as a system. So they'll be able to run their hydraulic models and they'll know, you know, are the pipes too small? Do we need additional capacity and stuff like that? So we needed to have our base mapping done. Somebody was going to do it. And Sam's was more set up to do that in the first place. So I'm going to turn it back over to Matt. He can talk about the rest of the parks and rec and, or parks and stormwater sales tax.
Yeah, so the Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax is a half cent sales tax that was passed by the voters in June of twenty-twenty. This began to see initial collections in around November twenty-twenty. And this sales taxes be used for the purpose of operating, maintaining, funding and or financing parks and recreation needs and stormwater control. On the Parks and Recreation side of this, we kind of talked about already that this fund helps. Get the Parks and Recreation Plan going and then also completed in July of two thousand twenty-one. In that master plan was set out kind of some ten-year goals. I'm in the first one, three years in short term was to complete Diamond Crest Park. That included on our side was playground sidewalk and fencing. As you guys can see now, that has been fully completed on our side. We are still waiting with the generous donation from Play Creek Development on parking lots. And shelter house slash restroom. So I'll continue to update Cynthia and other staff on how that goes as that moves, moves forward. Also in that year, one of the master plan was to increase signage at parks. Oddly enough, there are only basically two parks that have signage. So that is a, a big need to help identify city parks. Currently, they were ordered back in November, October timeframe and they are still back orders. So we're, we're just waiting on those to, to be delivered. If not, we may have to go a different route if it continues to wait any longer. And then I want to do a shout out to Myra and Gina. They helped complete an RTP grants application for Diamond Crest Trail Phase One. That would connect Diamond Crest and Lake Meadows to Diamond Crest Park and the old railroad right away trail. That is a Parks and Rec Master Plan and the Transportation Master Plan has an emphasis on trails. And this trail will be the phase one of getting it to go from Diamond Crest all the way back to Eagle Heights Elementary, which would. Provide safe walking and access to, to schools for those kids in those neighborhoods, which have a lot of kids in those neighborhoods, so. For two thousand twenty-three discussion points. For Parks and Recreation, we're going to implement year two of the Parks and Rec Master Plan and update the Playground Emerald Ridge Park. That playground is, was put in, I believe in two thousand twenty-three, it's not. The most prettiest playground there and it is every once in a while. Kind of on the edge of passing inspections and, and with the insurance. So rather rough and there's, and there's actually no ADA access to that playground as well from, from the street to the sidewalk. So we're going to try to keep that in mind and we will be trying to also get a grant for that with LWCF. That's through the Missouri Conservation for twenty-twenty-three. And then always consider fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-seven for the five-year capital improvement plan or fund. So continue to work on that.
Sanitation fund. So last year, if you remember, we went back with GFL. And we asked them to look at several different things, which they came back. We implemented a rate reduction. We had a fifteen percent senior discount. We had two citywide pickups. We had an electronic e-waste event and paper shredding event. And we introduced the downtown cardboard recycling, which seems to get full every couple of weeks. So it's working well and we held a household hazardous waste event as well. And for twenty-twenty-three, which we don't have a slide for, we are looking at a five percent increase. So just wanted to put that out there for you. GFL sent us that information. So we'll probably have that for more discussion in the future. I think that's all of it. Stephen, what's next? Yours.
Wraps up the department review for tonight. Pending the time we have left, I'll take you through a brief and succinct review of the five-year CIP. Next week, we have our financial summit. We'll go in-depth on this information. Our schedule of fees review for your consideration in June. And then we'll have a couple of discussions where we get to the nuts and bolts of the budget and the CIP. Another couple of opportunities for you to ask questions, do prioritization, provide feedback to staff. And then finally, in October, our process ends with your passing of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have CIP information. Do we want to proceed with that before we do regular budget? Because it will be important to go through that information in advance of the retreat next week.
It's on the agenda.
Thank you.
There's your pictures, Chuck. All right. Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to bring you the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-seven, five-year capital improvement plan. This is just one of the biggest components of the budget as it includes some of the highest amounts of dollars spent. And to kick it off, I'm going to provide you with a brief update on where we are with the five-year CIP. So myself, Cynthia are a management analyst and the directors. We've all worked together to update this proposed five-year CIP for your initial review and consideration. This five-year CIP is going to feature some significant changes from the previous CIP that was adopted, the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six CIP. So as we all know, project costs have really gone up with inflation. From concrete to asphalt, to various commodities and pipings, metals. All of these have played a tremendous role in increasing project costs. So we've updated the, the CIP to have those costs inputted and increased. And finally, this CIP has really been prioritized with cash flow in mind. And also various grant revenue opportunities. So I'll, I'll briefly touch on those opportunities and, and what projects they are attached to as we move through the CIP. I want to start off this review with a look at the combined water and wastewater fund. So like Chuck talked about, this combined water and wastewater fund CIP really has an emphasis on replacing. Aging utility infrastructure in our community. You can see there, we have a couple of cross-sections of some aging pipe, probably well over fifty years old. And, and this CIP is really going to put a focus on replacing this pipe. And improving our, our community's water lines and transmission of water. So you can see there's sediment buildup and corrosion of these aging water lines. And for example, in the CIP here that I'll show you, we're going to replace the similar condition water line on Quincy Boulevard and Fourth Street Terrace. This was our previous twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six, five-year CIP with just twenty-twenty-two listed. One key change you're going to see to the CIP this year is all the operational costs, such as a verf transfer or GIS management software. Some of the items that aren't really capital improvements. We're going to take that out of the CIP and I'll present that to you in the operating budget discussion. So when we look at the CIP now, we're just going to talk about capital improvement projects. We'll leave the operational things aside and we'll address them in a later time. But we have a number of projects that were getting done in twenty-twenty-two, which are listed in the first column. And then in the next four years on the previous CIP, we had a number of, of projects included plant expansion, rehab of water line. And a lot of these expenses have increased. So now I'll switch gears. I'm going to show you the proposed five-year CIP, just the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three column is pictured here. So we're just looking at one year. Right off the bat here, highlighted in yellow. As Chuck mentioned, we're looking to go to bid on a couple of these projects. Finance department's going to work with our financial advisor to get a financing solution. These two projects combined, Hundred and Forty-Fourth Street Lift Station and West Bypass total three point nine million dollars. So well over half of this fiscal year spend is on those two projects. And then we have another, another, a number of projects in this year that Chuck has touched on for a grant. And then we have another another a number of projects in this year that that Chuck has touched on for a grand total of a $7 million spend next year. Move into the next set of four years on this water and sewer CIP. And we have a lot of money that we're looking to spend and a lot of important investments in our community and the utility infrastructure. Now, this includes the bar screen of the wastewater plant or waterline rehab, gravity line for Owens Branch and begin our engineering on the wastewater treatment plant expansion so that we can address capacity and demand needs in our community. As we move in for 2025 to 2027, we've plugged in additional dollars to take care of other water and wastewater projects and also perform construction in 2027 planned for wastewater treatment plant expansion. A lot of these costs have increased with inflation and looking to get these projects done in the next few years. The highlighted ones, I just want to make a note would be financed through a COP, could look at a 20-year period for financing these projects. Finally, this is the pending CIP. These projects are not in the five-year and they would be beyond the five-year scope. We still have a lot of needs here. We would look at completing construction on the wastewater plant expansion and construction on the water plant beyond the 2027 fiscal year. So you'd be looking at another six to seven years when these projects would start to to get attention. And the ones in yellow again, because of the nature of the cost, we would also look to finance those. They're just can't be paid with cash. There's a few projects in the CIP which will intend to use wastewater and water impact cash. This impact cash has a restricted use and can be used to fund only water. And in this case, the wastewater capital projects that are intended for building our system capacity. So in 2023, we would do engineering on Owens Branch Gravity Line at $700,000. And then switching slides here on our water impact projects in 2023 and 2024, we'd use that water impact cash to do a 12-inch water line, expanding the water line on River Crossing, I believe. So together, those impact cash pieces, those have restricted uses. We track separate fund balances for those and they would be dedicated for those projects that you saw on the slides. Any questions on water and wastewater projects at this point? And move on to the Transportation Sales Tax Fund. This orange chart here shows our previously adopted 2022 to 2026 CIP. You see, we've allocated 300,000 for overlay. We completed Tillman and Hospital. And then here we have commercial street sidewalks, engineering and construction. And when we move to our new CIP, one of the big changes I just want to call out is we have with inflation and increased costs, the commercial street sidewalks engineering budget has increased. And then the construction costs on those have also increased in fiscal year 23 and then in 24. You can see in green, staff has worked to secure a mark reimbursement grant with a revenue of $500,000. So that offsets, helps to offset the construction costs and make this a more affordable project. As we move through the next few years of this CIP, Chuck and our staff from Streets Division, they're going to recommend roads for selection into the CIP based upon the updated pavement condition index each year. So that's why you see projects TBD with the PCI getting updated every year. They make those updates in the budget year. So as we move through this budget process, I think we'll probably be assigning some projects for 2023. Here's our pending CIP, which is our transportation projects that are out here, our five-year scope. This pending list isn't prioritized. It's just a listing of everything that's not in the five-year. These cost estimates, one thing to keep in mind, they just haven't been updated to reflect current market trends. But even with those lower numbers, these certainly would be higher. We still have over $2.5 million in mill and overlay needs and asphalt overlay needs in this community. Good capital improvement sales tax. In the previous CIP, we keep an annual transfer to debt service that we use to pay off our series 2018 and 2019 geo bonds for street improvements that we've made. This year, we bid our streetscape north Bridge Street Engineering Project. And then next year, we have a lot of projects that we had slated. We had downtown streetscape north with a mark reimbursement and then we had our downtown gateway sign. Moving to our updated CIP here. One of our big changes is the downtown gateway sign is no longer there in fiscal year 23. I'll show that in the next slide on pending. And then in 23, there's an increase to $800,000 for our downtown streetscape north construction. And then we also have a number of projects that Chuck has mentioned that have we have applied for mark reimbursement for those projects. They're in red because we've applied that we have not yet secured funding. But with that grant opportunity, we've placed that into the CIP and we still have some flexibility if we do not receive funding to other projects that can go in there. By fall of 2022, we'll have grants awarded by Mark and we'll have have some decisions on those projects. In the pending list, you see there at the top, we have the downtown gateway sign. And then in red, again, like I explained, these are projects that staff has submitted for mark reimbursement grant. We have not yet secured funding. But this, if we do receive funding for these projects down the road, this makes a tremendous difference in our grand total net cost. You can see all the reimbursement grants that would offset the cost for the roundabouts and other traffic improvements that would improve safety in the community. Von and talk about the Park and Stormwater Sales Tax Fund. In our previously adopted CIP, we had Diamond Crest Park, which was pictured on the previous slide and is completed. Our work on the Stormwater Master Plan beginning in our engineering for Quincy Owens and Curbs. And then Matt touched upon the Emerald Ridge Neighborhood Park and signage for 2023. And then other large projects as we scale out. On our new CIP, we have Quincy Boulevard and Owen Street Curbs and Stormwater. This has been inputted and the budget has been increased to $250,000. We have our Emerald Ridge Neighborhood Park at 150. And then also new to this CIP and I believe contingent upon receiving the grant is going to be a trail out at the Diamond Crest Neighborhood. And this is going to be a multi-use trail. If we do receive that grant, you can see $100,000 would would reimburse that project, make it a great value. Further out into the CIP, we do work out at Smith's Fork with sport courts, skate park, basketball court. We also have some grant monies to offset that in 2025 of 300,000. And then we really start to work towards one of our signature projects from our master plan in 2027, designed for the Smith's Fork Park Complex. Along the way, we're employing a financial strategy of saving up fund balance in this fund so that we can do Smith's Fork Park Complex, hopefully around 2028, 2029 and pay cash for that. When we look at the pending CIP in the Park and Storm, you can see we have, if I go right to the bottom, we have over 14.4 million in needs left to go. But we have major projects from the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we're lining up to help pay for with this fund. So it includes Smith's Fork Park, Heritage Park and Destination Development at the park. So as we work through the next 20 years of the sales tax, it's going to make some incredible investments for the community. And a lot of those investments come out of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we've approved. Touch briefly on the general fund CIP and what it looked like last year. We did campground electrical upgrades this year out at Smith's Fork that Matt referenced. Gina and Chuck and Myra, they're all working to finish up GIS Asset Management invoicing and programming. And then we had a vehicle and equipment fund transfer into our verf to support vehicles. What you're going to see this year is at this time, we don't have anything slated in the general fund for capital. And like I said at the beginning, operating expenses are going to be removed from the CIP. We're going to talk about those in our our operational request discussions. And at this time, we we have no capital improvement projects in the general fund. We're moving capital to the sales tax funds. What we do have is when we move to our pending CIP, we have some pretty significant community needs and these are really our unfunded projects that don't currently have a funding source. It includes a couple of key projects. We brought you a police needs assessment and that described the cost and engineering for the new police building. They're at 17 million. And then we've also done work with some preliminary design on the Streets Division and Parks Facility building, a total of 8.5. So we have 25.5 million there in pending capital improvement projects. And as we move to our retreat, as we look to pursue these projects, we're going to have to evaluate debt capacity and funding sources. Really in conclusion on this, on this five-year CIP, we've worked to position these projects based upon what the funds can afford. And we're going to look at those cash photographs at the board retreat. We've prioritized these projects based upon need. And finally, we've looked at them with grant opportunities and and what we can receive from outside agencies. Our utility rate study that Raffatellus is completing for us. They're going to give us a water and wastewater capital and rate plan. And I anticipate we'll have some preliminary numbers to review at the board retreat. And thank you to Meyer for yeah, for corresponding with them and 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 getting those rates available to us by then. And finally, we just are looking for your initial comments and your feedback on this CIP and your thoughts on how they're prioritizing position.
Thank you. Any comments? Need more money?
Well, and if I may, Mayor, just this has been a lot of information. I really want to recognize Steven, Myra, the entire staff for pulling the information together on not only the six-month information, starting the budget development process and really working to refine the CIP. The inflationary factor that is affecting everyone is affecting our CIP projects probably as significantly as anything in our budget. So that's why that information is it's it's dramatic and change. We also have really worked to outline a longer range CIP plan that addresses those needs that align with the priorities have been established over the last several years through our strategic planning, our comprehensive planning process and the studies that I had indicated earlier. Very pleased with the work staff has presented. I know it's a lot of information. So we don't look for information necessarily tonight, but we do ask as we start the retreat next week, think through this information as well as the nine memos we'll be providing you on Friday, maybe 10, not sure yet. But look through that information. That's the homework and thinking about for the retreat and come with those priorities that we can start thinking about. We'll provide additional information that might shift some of that thinking. But we've we've got a lot of work to do on Wednesday, but really appreciate staff's efforts in bringing this information forward.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session.
May.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned for five minutes, get a bio. Kelly's running out the door.